Call to order, the Ashland Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, March 24th, 2022. We're going to start a little bit different today. We're going to start with a moment of silence for Marine Corporal Jacob Moore. And I can't tell you how hard it is to get this news. No one likes to lose anybody, but knowing those that give themselves to protect our country, it's very hard on us. And we extend our sincerest condolences to the family and friends. And so we'll start with a moment of silence, and then the pledge of allegiance, and then our invocation.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we are thankful for our city, Ashland, Kentucky. And today it is an honor and a privilege to be able to serve our community. We once again ask for your divine wisdom and guidance as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and its people. We thank you for the unity of spirit and the hard work of our city manager, our staff and employees who labor each day to make our city the best it could be. Bless our efforts today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Do we have a motion to receive and file the agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can we go to hearings and reports? Commissioners, if you'll allow me to start. We have a proclamation today, as requested from Commissioner Clark. Whereas in times of crisis, people in our community come together to care for one another. This humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and exemplified by our local American Red Cross volunteers and donors. And as whereas last year in the tri-state chapter, with the challenges of the pandemic, the Red Cross assisted over 250 families impacted by disaster, installed over 300 smoke alarms, educated more than 400 students in preparedness education, collected almost 8,500 units of life-saving blood for at over 750 blood drives, trained 5,500 people in life-saving skills such as CPR and first aid, and provided nearly 800 services to 340 military members, veterans and their families through the efforts of over 150 volunteers. And whereas their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening the tri-state chapter's community's resilience, we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." We ask others to join in this commitment to give back to our community. So we will declare this month American Red Cross Month, and I'll give this to you to share with the board.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Also, this month, or coming up, I'm sorry, the repair fair is May 21st, but coming up next month will be the deadline for submissions, April 4th. We have had a brief reprieve from the repair fair due to the pandemic, but I'm glad to say that we are back on track with this. And there's a lot of folks in our community that are needing help and a lot of volunteers willing to help, and so we're grateful for that. We ask that you reach out to our Department of Planning and Community Economic Development, and DJ Reimer, I think, is heading that up, or Scott Neese. But we will need your help, and there is a lot to do. So we're grateful to all involved, and we surely want as many people that need assistance to reach out to us to let us know if we can be of service. Commissioners?
I'll go ahead and start. First, thank you for the proclamation. I serve on the board of the tri-state chapter of the American Red Cross, and they ask that we do this for them, and so I'm glad to see that. Also, I wanted to let you know, on May the 14th, the Red Cross has Sound the Alarm. They have chosen Ashland as their city of focus, so we'll be gathering volunteers to install smoke alarms in places where they need them. So we'll be getting with you chief to coordinate that, but Ashland will be the focus of their Sound the Alarm campaign, so I wanted to make sure that that was out there. Also, in case you haven't seen it, the tickets for the Gravy Bowl are on sale, April 2nd. You can go to Ashland in Motion for the link to that, and that's all I have right this second.
Okay. Commissioner Goot, got anything?
Yes, I don't want to overlap. I know the city manager's going to mention, but this is a big day for us because we're going to dedicate the skate park at 1:30 out there at AK Park, and this has been kind of a dream come true, and I want to give credit where credit's due. Commissioner Spriggs, you pushed for this, and it was a team effort by all of us to spruce up all our parks, and we committed this money. It's about $90,000, $90,000 to $100,000. And it is a really nice skate park, and we hope the skateboarders will really appreciate it and take care of it. I'm going to really stress to them when I get out there, I'm going to go in coach mode for about a half hour, and just tell them, you know, I really stress for them to take ownership of this and make sure that they take care of it and patrol this, help us patrol it. No vandalism, no hanky panky out there, be safe and everything, no bicycles and no scooters. This is skate, skateboard. And I ran off a couple kids the other day, but you know what happened? The mom called me back in about 30 minutes, and I thought, well, here we go. Let's do it. If you want to dance, let's go. And so she called me back in a few minutes and apologized. And that's something good. It shows some class and some character. And she said, I apologize for my two kids. They didn't know that the park was closed. And I said, well, ma'am, you know, I want this to be, I want them to enjoy it, but it's a liability when things aren't finished. They could get hurt. And so I made up with them, and we made up and everything, so we had, you know, it was a good situation. But I want to stress this, this is a really nice park, and we're doing a lot of work in the parks right now. It's near and dear to my heart because I turn 67 tomorrow, and before that, this was my dad's playground since 1928. We grew up next to the park, and so we're seeing all these things happen, and it's good. It's a good quality of life when you take care of your park system. And so I've been over there to talk with the workers at All-Inclusive, and they're just about done with the floor, the rubberized floor of that All-Inclusive Playground. They're going to pour a concrete to sidewalk from the drawbridge to the inclusive playground that will connect them. The sensory garden will be open the last of April to coincide with Autism Awareness Month, and the ball fields are, the Little Leaguers are ecstatic about the ball fields being spruced up. So a lot of great things happening, and I'm not, I just, I don't want to just accentuate the parks. All you guys in the back, you staff, water, sewer, fire, police, I appreciate all of you, and you're doing a great job. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Spriggs?
Hello, everybody. Commissioner Goot and I were at the Capitol Projects Committee meeting last week, and, you know, we, things come to us one by one, but to sit down for almost two hours, we were there, correct?
Yeah.
And see all of these projects together at once, I'm almost speechless to see how much our city is doing. It's amazing, and it just goes to show what teamwork can do. Everybody, every employee of the city, the commission, management, everybody is involved in these, and it's quite wonderful to see the progress we're making in these areas. And speaking of teamwork, as Commissioner Goot mentioned, the skate park today, this has been very dear to my heart. I tried to get it done years ago. I'm privileged now to work with a commission that sees the value of doing things like this for our public and for the community. So, and to talk about teamwork, we again talk about every department in this city, the commission, and our skateboard community involved in this project. So it truly is a community project, and that's another thing that makes us so proud to see so many people come together to work on a common goal. And I just want to say happy birthday tomorrow to Commissioner Marty Goot.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Blanton.
Yes. So I am in the process of moving right now, and just wanted to throw that out there. But no, anytime I can put myself, you know, use a city service as all of our citizens do, I like to see, you know, how it goes. And so I had a really good experience with switching over my water service the other day, and I just want to mention that with our customer service reps were awesome and, you know, had me squared away in just a couple minutes. I waited in line on the phone call for just a minute, but it tells you exactly how many people are in front of you, and it updates, it updates a lot. It keeps updating every couple seconds, actually, but it's good. It was a really good system, and she took care of me. Also, want to mention a couple businesses. We just had a little coffee shop open up downtown, the Coffee Dock. Stop down and check them out if, you know, coffee shops, I think we're all in favor of. It's a great little place. The local mercantile in South Ashland, they're starting, they have their soft opening on Sunday, so stop up there and see them, Scott and Christina Wamsley, opening that business. Paramount Players are, have the Descendants that will be starting, Disney's Descendants that will be tomorrow and Saturday this weekend, so obviously they always do an amazing job with their performances, so stop by and see their show. One of our own, Michelle Grubb, is starring in the show again, so thank you, Michelle. Also, just a last note about the skate park. The skate park, I think, if you've seen pictures of it, it looks amazing, and I wanted to mention, a couple friends told me, and I didn't realize this until they told me a few days ago, about the story in The Independent from 2013 about a young man who was really, he was a skater, and he was an Ashland citizen, really pushing for something to happen back then. His name was Tommy Livingston, and tragically, a month after that article that's in The Independent in 2013, he lost his life. But if you read that article, you see he was very passionate about it, not just him, but all of our skating community in Ashland. So we're thinking about him and his spirit today when we open that park, and also want to give a shout out to the awesome citizens that have given input on making, on how to design that park, and they have buy-in on that, and they're really proud of it, just the same as we are. Shane Ayers and Josh Qualls both involved in it, as well as other people from our skating community, so we thank them for their input.
All right. And I'd be remiss not to thank our Parks Department as well and our Park Board for their assistance and support in making these changes that our citizens have asked us to make for them. We are committed to improving the quality of life in our community, and this is one of the ways that we are proud to do so. We'll move on to public participation. Anyone with a com-
City manager.
I'm sorry, city manager's report.
No problem there, nothing.
Hey, that's all right. I did this to Tony last, or two weeks ago, or two meetings ago. Tony, you're not alone.
Just really quickly, I think this is going to be the last time I report on COVID. We've got zero employees testing positive right now, and I think you all know that the community is in a hurry, so unless something, God forbid, that increases, I will not speak on COVID statistics again. If you've noticed while the mayor and commissioners have been speaking, there's some before-and-after pictures. I think there's 19 that are up there. Michelle, DJ, and Lorraine is not here today. You all know, and I'll go over the overall statistics, but we know the numbers are really incredible, but when you look at those before-and afters, it's really what the mayor and commissioners have been getting after for the last couple of years. So broad statistical update, 32 demolitions are complete. 11 demolitions are working, eight are on hold for code enforcement or legal issues that are being done, four contracts are to the commission today, four bids will be opened on the 31st, six bids will be opened on the 14th of April, and 11 are out for title search. So in a perfect world scenario, that's 69 plus eight, potentially, depending on the legals, that could be blight removal this year. So mayor commissioners, thank you all, and thanks to everybody on the staff that's making that happen. If you could switch over to that other slide, I did want to show you one thing. Item number 13 on your consent agenda may have just gone by you, but it's the 10th Street and the 18th Street outfalls. So I think you all know that every year we get a report from the Army Corps of Engineers that looks at our flood wall and some of the challenges we have out there. And the Streets Department, Jack and his folks did the 32nd Street. It was a project that they could tackle with the skill set and the equipment that they had, but they couldn't tackle these other two. So you can see, again, even to the untrained eye, the problems with the 10th Street there, that's the before and after. And next slide, please. And that's the 18th Street. So pretty big difference. This gets us up to snuff on the, I think that's all aspects of the last year's Corps of Engineer inspection. Is that accurate? Okay. So I just wanted to show you that. Also, item number one on your new business, I believe, is the acceptance of the caper. I wanted to let you know, because Lorraine Woolery is out of town this week, she will be giving a full briefing on the details of that caper next week, or excuse me, next meeting before we do the second reading on it. But a good news, good news story there on how we've executed those CDBG funds this year, and she'll give all the great details on that next week. And then last thing, and hopefully not to be repetitive here, just great news on the skate park. I know there's a lot of energy and excitement, understandably, given the capabilities of that skate park and people wanting to get on it, but as the commissioner said, there's liability issues when that happens. We think we're going to be clean to go today in the policing of that. Also, to take a little bit of a deeper dive on the All-Inclusive Playground, we expect that rubberized surface to be completed tomorrow, according to Parks. It takes 72 hours to cure, so we're going to double up, mayor commissioners, we're going to double up our signage out there, they're going to double up the snow fence. I'm just begging the community to stay off that surface so it doesn't do any damage to it. We want to open it up as much as you all do. Mr. Murray, we're focusing also on getting the handicap parking and the access to that playground, and we will open that thing up before we get that done, but those are also in the process of being done, weather-dependent. But please, we're all excited. I got a two-year-old granddaughter that wants to get on there more than she can stand, and just please keep the kids and adults off of that until it cures, and we'll keep the drumbeat going.
Mention the smoking.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner. Also, we do have a city ordinance, thank you very much. City Ordinance 158 from 2020 specifically states that there is no smoking in the playgrounds or around the playgrounds. So ordinance 158, my interactions with smokers in areas that are clearly marked in the parks, nine times out of 10 are positive. People say they don't know, so I do encourage citizens to educate other citizens. If it becomes negative, walk away, let our Parks Department know, and they will do the enforcement. But many times, people just simply don't know, but there is a city ordinance against smoking in the parks, excuse me, in the playgrounds and/or around the playgrounds. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you so much. I saw a cigar when a kindergarten smoked a cigar over there.
Should be the home park.
All right. On that note, moving forward, we're going to go to public participation. Anyone with a comment or request may come to the podium and address the commission concerning matters related to city business services or personnel. We ask that you keep your comments within that timeframe. No action's going to be taken at this meeting. No one will make any decisions on anything, so we ask that your comments be filled out in an inquiry and complaint form and leave it with the city clerk for distribution. Would anybody like to come forward? Seeing none, we'll go with old business.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Creating the Position of Customer Service Representative Supervisor and Adopting the Job Description for Said Position in the Department of Finance and Adopting the amended authorized Positions List of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by Ordinance Number 51, Series of 2017, as previously amended."
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda?
A resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of March 24th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just would like to make a note, commissioners, if you'll note the fiscal note on number two, down at the bottom of the page, it looks like we have a increase of cost of $262,000. And this is striking, but I assume it has to do with pandemic-related issues, supply chain issues. It's literally very tough to swallow.
Yeah, I was astounded by that.
But it's striking, but it's part of the challenges we face, even with potential construction costs in other areas, so.
And just for clarification purposes, for people who don't have an agenda in front of them, these are the chemicals that we use in water treatment.
Yeah.
Waste water.
And wastewater, sorry.
Yeah. All right.
Just a note about the Ashland Building, so, because I mean, I'm sure lots of people are noticing 14th Street's closed now, and we're doing the asbestos abatement, correct?
Yes, sir. So asbestos abatement is going on. I just forgot the name of the company. O'Rourke is trying to get ahead of the demolition as much as possible, and if they get approval, they, after, they will simultaneously do asbestos abatement and also start demolishing it from the top, but they're waiting on final approval from the state, I believe, on that. But we're expecting late fall for the total completion of that project.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
How many, how many blighted properties are we up to total?
It was.
About 77, if you figure the eight.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two at this point, but.
Thirty-two at this point, and I've just lost that sheet that I read.
Sixty-nine plus eight.
Thirty-two and 11 and eight on hold.
I have so much paper in front of me. Thirty-two demolitions are complete, 11 demolitions are working, eight are on hold for code enforcement, eight contracts to the commission, or four contracts to the commission today, four bid openings on the 31st, six bid openings on the 14th, and 11 out for title search. So if everything goes well, it could be a total of 69-plus, pending those eight.
Sixty-nine plus, so that's 77.
Would it be fair to say we've done more in one year than we did in a decade as far as demolitions?
Amen.
Okay.
Probably longer than mine, like 50 years.
All right. Any other discussion? We'll move on to our favorite time of year where we challenge our city attorney with a lot of interesting terminology.
I have done this one every year since I've been in this position.
I thought so.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, if you're watching.
I think Mr. Moore does that on purpose.
He schedules his vacation knowing.
This is my, I've told you, it's my favorite meeting.
Did Sonny even have you stand in one time?
Yes.
Yes, he did, and I'm under strict instruction from him to pronounce every syllable, so. Yes, he did, and I'm under strict instruction from him to pronounce every syllable, so I'll do my best.
Well, we'll start then with new business.
Item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting the Plan Year 2020 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Review Capor and Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Submit the Plan Year 2020 Capor to the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Brentag Mid-South Inc. for the Purchase of Liquid Caustic Soda at a Price of $1.50 per gallon, Liquid Sodium Permanganate at a Price of $12.885 per gallon, Powdered Activated Carbon at a Price of $1.36 per gallon per pound, Liquid Chlorine at a Price of $1,449 per ton, Potassium Permanganate at a Price of $2.23 per pound, and Sodium Hypochlorite at a Price of $1.6990 per gallon for the Department of Utilities, Division of Wastewater Production and Waste, I'm sorry, Divisions of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item C, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Sitco Water for the Purchase of Sulfur Dioxide at a Price of $1,135 per ton, and Sand at a Price of $18 per pound for the Department of Utilities, Divisions of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Polydene Inc. for the Purchase of Liquid Polymer for the Water Treatment Plant and for the Wastewater Treatment Plant at a Price of $13.33 per gallon, and Polymer Cationic at a Price of $2.33 per pound for the Department of Utilities, Divisions of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Univar Solutions for the Purchase of Hydrofluosilic Acid at a Price of $2.90 per gallon for the Department of Utilities, Divisions of Wastewater Treatment and Water Production.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Usalco LLC for the Purchase of Aluminum Sulfate at a Price of $1.1382 per gallon for the Department of Utilities, Divisions of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City
of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute, Execute a Contract with Lights Enterprises, Inc. for the Purchase of All Labor, Materials, Equipment, and Services for the Demolition and Removal of All Debris of 917 Bern Street in the Amount of $8,800 for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Lights Enterprises, Inc. for the Purchase of All Labor, Materials, Equipment, and Services for the Demolition and Removal of All Debris of 3220 Hampton Street in the Amount of $5,900 for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item I, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Womack Excavating LLC for the Purchase of All Labor, Materials, Equipment, and Services for the Demolition and Removal of All Debris of 1719 Harlan Street in the Amount of $3,800 for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item J, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Womack Excavating LLC for the Purchase of All Labor, Materials, Equipment, and Services for the Demolition and Removal of All Debris of 2111 Moore Street in the Amount of $4,500 for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item K, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Accepting the Proposal of Conventions Sports and Leisure International LLC for Professional Services in an Amount Not to Exceed $55,587 to Conduct a Feasibility Study and Market Analysis Regarding the Potential Development of a Conference Center at 1401 Winchester Avenue for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Last item of new business is a municipal order for your consideration, and this is a municipal order entitled, a Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Letter of Support for Submission of a Joint Grant Application Between the City of Ashland and the County of Boyd to the Kentucky Department for Environmental Protection for the 2022-2023 Household Hazardous Waste Management Grant in the Amount of $42,231.17, and if awarded, authorizing acceptance of the grant and further authorizing and directing the mayor to execute any and all other documents regarding said grant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Andrew, great job.
Mr. Mayor, do we know how, or maybe I should say, city commissioner, do we know how much money we've spent on the blight houses so far? Do we have a total anywhere?
Any-
Ballpark.
I don't have a total, we didn't provide it, I think I was breaking the law.
Okay.
Yeah, we have them out there.
Yeah, it just occurred to me, we're talking about number of houses, but, you know, it's not free to do these, so.
This one is too bad.
Okay.
Actually, this is the one y'all provided me, so if it all goes, if it all goes through, $426,000, that's lock, stock, and barrel all the ones I mentioned before.
But what we've spent so far, we don't have that number.
But what we've spent so far, don't have, I mean, I could calculate it now, but it would take me a second.
And we're looking at multiple sources of funding those demolitions, it's not just general fund, it's, it's using federal funds when appropriate, so.
Yes.
Any other new business? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Our meeting is adjourned, thank you all so much.
See you at the skate park.
Skate park at 1:30, correct?